Yep.
Well, we've done that.
Yes, okay, so we're moving on to uh, motion to approve the lot aggregation for the River View Park subdivision. The owners are Lee and Mary Smith. Can I get a motion for that? And a second? Okay, John. All right, so it's this is from quite a while ago, but it took a while to get the um, map thing. So this is their lot. It's basically um, not anything too fancy. It's just putting new lots together and making it into one. Here we are. Um. So. Well, it's on Snyder Avenue. And what's the, oh, and Taylor, South Taylor and Snyder. Kind of over by Nikosikah. That Snyder is that road that goes to Nikosikah. Um. It's the River View Park subdivision, so. Mm-hmm. So anyway, that's um, sorry, I didn't put that in your packet, but you had quite a bit in there, so.
It was already going to be more.
Yeah.
And they recommended it.
Yes, so all we're just, these are just little hosting things, so. Is there any discussion about it? So all in favor of approving the lot aggregation for the River View Park subdivision with the owners Lee and Mary Smith, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? No, okay. Now, the next item is to approve the Yellowstone Park Minor Subdivision. You have all that information in your packet. We've already had the public hearing and that was the time to have discussions, so. Could I get a motion to approve the Yellowstone Park Minor Subdivision? Okay, Doug, and a second by Joan. All right, so all in favor of approving Yellowstone Park Minor Subdivision Plan?
That's just the question.
Yes.
So then when we vote right here, you're voting to approve what's called Yellowstone Park Phase One and Phase Two.
Yes, I put Phase One on here, but I forgot about the Phase Two and then I already had the agenda.
Oh, it does say Phase One. So what are we doing?
We're, we're just approving the Yellowstone Park Minor Subdivision. It's Phase One and Phase Two.
Okay, we're approving both of them.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I wasn't at the hearing, but I just, um, I'm wondering about curb sidewalk and gutter. Is that on the developer or is that on the homeowner?
It is supposedly all, has all been taken care of. They've met all the zoning regulations. They've um, they have the infrastructure and they've done everything. It's my understanding. Um.
This company has?
Well, they're doing it step, well, they're doing one thing at a time. The way that this is working is they're
without Frank looking back. Picking wrong, but I do think that is part of the um, the Montana subdivision regulations that, that that they have to adhere to. So that's why it's in Phase One and Phase Two. So the first phase, they will be extending services as far as Phase One and then that at the time, and they, and they had to have a bond, cash bond or something in place. So if they bail out in the middle of this subdivision, that can take the cash bond and finish it.
And they're also asking people that want to buy these upfront money too.
Um, yeah, and that's, I mean, but that doesn't get
Citizens just out money.
Well, that would, I'd probably look into civil city that would not, yeah, for extending services, but that's, that's following Montana subdivision law. So they, they would put sidewalk, curb gutter, water, storm, asphalt, gas, liquid. All, all utilities up as far as your subdivision goes, and that's, I think, will also why they did two phases, so we're on such a big biting out such a big chunk at one time.
I just thought it was poorly designed and put together. So I will probably be voting now on it.
So, um, Mayor um, Assistant Director Mr. Coon, I don't mean that. Too sarcastic here. The, uh, with Phase Two, the engineering's not done, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the bond is not there. But we approve it here, but for them to develop that in the future, they will have to put up a cash bond that will cover the cost of development, which we wouldn't know until the engineering's done. Is that correct? Or the, the, the engineering is a separate thing altogether for Phase Two? Um, I remember talking to Frank at the meeting about this.
Well, I haven't seen the engineering that they've done so far, but typically that would engineering stuff would be done. They, I'm, I'm sure they didn't pay for the engineering that's done on Phase Two, so they were paid for the engineering that's done.
When they do Phase Two.
Right.
The money will be put up then. What I'm getting at is we're approving it now, but so when that comes later, we won't have any say in whether, um. Well, but conditions are there, and if they're not met, then it will follow the state law.
The developer must post a performance bond for a hundred and ten point five percent of the engineer's costs estimate. But one in the maintenance guarantees are said to complete for the fix teamwork.
But I guess that's a good question, and I don't know. What are they?
Well, the
This is out of my world.
Well, the, one of the questions says, why is the subdivision split into Phase One and Two? This is in your packet. It says, Montana law lets us build and record Phase One once it meets all standards, while Phase Two can follow under the same plat once the developer provides financial guarantees. It helps match infrastructure capacity to actual demand. So they must, uh, do a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty-five percent of the engineer's costs. Um. It says, it, yeah, so the, there, there are, you know, they've answered the questions. They've gone through the steps and they've we've had the public hearing and, uh, um, Mr. Sanderson has, you know, made some of this in red, so it's easier for us to read and what we need to pick out of there. Um. We, they only, we only have so many days to vote on this after the public hearing, so this isn't something that we can table and put off.
Just
So.
Mayor, just, and thank you, but the very last question says, will the public get to review Phase Two later? And yes, must go through standard amendment or final plat process, which includes another public notice and hearing. But I'm not sure what good a hearing is if the governing body, which is us, doesn't then vote on it. See what I'm saying? A hearing doesn't determine anything. It's just people give input. And even the planning board doesn't have real statutory authority. They have advisory authority, but anyway, um. I think the other things that have been stated will
Yeah, my
suffice in my mind, but it is funny that it says public review. To me, it should then go to a public governing body for a vote, because otherwise I mean, you know, talk and hearings are nice, but they lead to an action, a legal action. But it doesn't say that here. It just says another public notice and hearing, but, um.
It does. They'll say here that the city is going to have to be known as Yellowstone Park Phase One and be approved, subject to the following conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's the cat will be on cart. Maybe we need to just vote for Phase One.
Well, let's leave it as it is then, approving Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision. And if there's any other
That's
discussing about it.
And that's what the motion is, right?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, it was maybe in the water for a buddy.
Any, any other discussion about it? All right, well. This isn't something that would require a roll call vote. Do you want to do a roll call vote? Do you feel more comfortable with that?
This is a roll call.
Okay. All right, let's see the roll call vote for the approving the Yellowstone Park Phase One Minor Subdivision.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon?
Aye.
Dryden?
Aye.
Hedrick? Heinz?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mm-hmm. The next item is to approve the agreement for services on an as-needed basis with I Bailey. Could I get a motion for that?
A motion.
Okay, Mike, in a second, by Betsy. All right, so that is in your packet, uh. We don't know that we will need I Bailey anymore, but, um, they did offer us basically the same thing that they've given us now, and they're giving us a pretty good deal. So, um, it's in there and it explains like if we want to make a call and ask a question, it depends on who we talk to, how much it's going to cost, but um, I thought just for now, um, John's still new, and of course, I struggle with these kind of things. So, um. It was a pretty, pretty typical, um, a lot like the agreements that we thought we already have with them. Um. And they're willing to do as little or as much as we need. So if we don't need them, we don't pay anything, and if we do need them for a question, then, um, we have them there as a resource. Yes.
But the type of questions
Yeah. We did budget for it, yes. Yes, Jason.
I think just at least do the budget process. I like the idea.
Oh, they've been really helpful, yeah.
Yeah. It's been really helpful. I mean, they, they've done a good job before John's out here, but now John's out, he can't offer it, so. It, it's worked pretty well.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Pay their full rate for July and August to get through the budget process, which was already a reduction from what they reported last year. And then starting in September with the, as needed basis, so.
Yeah, and John answered some of the questions, and then you have, uh, we call that kind of year-end clearinghouse stuff, like they get the names. Yeah, those things will be coming in this fall, then after the budget.
So that's why, a big part of why we wanted to keep them available is to, uh, finish that up and have continuity since they've done a lot this couple of years. And there's always stuff that comes up. Unusual stuff that might come up that we have on the questions on, or um, it's just good to have them available. So basically, we're going to budget six months out of the year after there's really not a lot that comes up with the calendar. But then next fiscal year, we'll kind of do probably budget for the first of the year again, just as a placeholder and go with that.
Perfect. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, since this is an agreement, kind of like a contract, we will need to do a roll call vote for um, approving our services on an as-needed basis with I Bailey.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon? Dryden?
Aye.
Rick? Heinz? Mitchell?
Aye.
Sassy?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is to get a motion to approve Resolution Three One Eight One, which is a two point five percent wage increase for elected officials. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Jason, in a second. Okay, Mike. Got Jason and Mike. All right, any questions or discussion about this? No?
For the all elected officials?
Yes.
Judge Mayor.
Other questions or discussion about? All right, it's a resolution, so it's a roll call vote.
Baker?
Aye.
Coon? Dryden?
Aye.
Hedrick?
Aye.
Heinz?
No.
Mitchell? Sassy?
Aye.
Passes?
The next item is to set and approve fines for weed violations. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Betsy, in a second. Okay, Joan. All right, so any discussion about this? It is, uh, in the weed ordinance, which is in your packet, and, uh, I believe in there, it's not called a fine, it's called a penalty. And so it says that we can assess a penalty and then we can penalize them every time that we go back, so. We send a letter, we're putting a notice in the paper. Um. And once they've received their letter, and if they don't respond, they have seven days to clean up their weeds. And then the city goes in, does it, and bills them. But as Frank has said many times, um, we've got a lot of repeat offenders and it doesn't seem to be a deterrent when there's no penalty. Um. You know, you don't clean them up. The city cleans them up. It goes on your taxes, and then we just keep doing it. So it, it did seem to make sense that we have a penalty and at the ordinance committee, um, we just had Kevin and Betsy there at that meeting, but, um, first we proposed a hundred dollars and that seemed like that wouldn't really be a deterrent to people. So, um, the ordinance committee came up with, uh, three hundred dollars for the first offense and then five hundred dollars each time that we have to go back. So if you have a suggestion for a different amount, or go ahead, Mike.
Well, suggest, uh, different there, that others, if they like. The, um, penalty that you just mentioned, that's in addition though to what
The cleanup
Cost of our people to clean it up.
Right. We would charge them that.
Which is what we used to do in the past, is charge that.
Right, with no penalty.
Right.
But we do have the ability to uh, levy a penalty. Yes.
Pay the penalty?
It goes it goes on their taxes. It goes, it's assessed on their property. Well, you know, that's a concern, and honestly, um, some sometimes a three hundred dollars is a lot of money for people. I mean, even a hundred dollars can be a lot of money. I, I realize they might not think that's a deterrent, but, um, it, it can be a hardship. So.
Yeah, mine don't.
It's also expensive for five or six city workers to spend all morning. All property, I would need to put that into perspective, if we have something. It's an expense of the city, but it, it's the taxpayers that are paying.
That's exactly true. It's all the taxpayers, and that keeps the city workers from doing other tasks as well. So, I mean, we have sent out a lot of weed notices lately, and we have gotten a few calls about them, so, um, people are cleaning them up, um, but you know, they do go back, so.
So the city, how long does it take the city to assess what the charge is? Like, you have five workers versus three workers, obviously would be a different charge, because then how long did it take, et cetera?
Right. And, you know, what equipment was used in, in the landfill fees, because if you we have to haul a bunch of stuff to the landfill, sometimes it's a little more than mowing the weeds.
Right, right. But I mean, all those charges would be levied before anything we do here.
Well, we would send them a bill, and then if they don't pay it, that's when it goes on their taxes.
Right, but I'm just, I'm saying that the charges are already there, whether we have a penalty or not, but now we're adding the suggestion is the first time three hundred extra to that charge.
Right.
Yeah, if, if you guys went one hundred, three hundred, five hundred, um, I, I don't know, it's, uh, it's nice people have a lot of, it's kind of like where people get pulled into court and they can't pay even the cost of the court that they get pulled into, so it kind of defeats itself. Uh, but if you guys, because you're probably looking at five hundred dollars, I'm guessing, it easily costs over a hundred dollars.
Definitely.
Just to send people over there to do it, so.
So not to get too deep in the weeds, huh?
That is a good one, that is a good.
So is the repeat offender reset each year?
It could be, no, it could happen five times in the summer if they
Well, but I mean, so they get first time offense.
Right.
Twenty-five, then if they get another offense at twenty-six, still first time offense, or is it?
I think it would start over every year, but I'm not, I mean, that doesn't, it isn't specified in our ordinance. Uh, but my understanding was if we charge them three hundred dollars and then in a month and a half, we have to go back and then it's five hundred dollars, and then you have to go back in the fall. Um, you know, I would, I would think that they would respond to the first three hundred dollars. Uh, because that is, I think that's a pretty substantial penalty for not mowing your weeds.
But I think it should be set each.
Yeah, I agree.
Mayor, this is, um, I know a lot of research has been shut down around things, not so much right here, but, uh, how much are, uh, of the problem comes from absentee landlords? They don't live here.
That I don't, I don't know that.
That, that's
And we do try to give people a break who, because we know, we know people work in the oil field or, you know, they might be gone for two weeks at a time.
Right.
Um. So they do have that seven days that they can contact us, and, you know, say, if they get the letter and they're not here. Um, I think we've been pretty flexible.
Then with the rent, with the property owner and the renter, the property owner's job is to if he wants the renter to do it, to figure out how that gets done, because we're, we hold the property owner responsible.
We build the property owner, yes. So do we have a motion for, uh, is that what we're going to follow the ordinance recommendation for the penalty? Because I'm wondering if we could make a okay.
Take that motion second. It's sensitive here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'll send it.
And the amounts, do I include that? Yeah, in the motion? I think, I think we can, but we get a man's.
Process is set by the council to set the limit. There's no administrative body that's going to set the limit on the penalty. I mean, the amount, that's what we so in the future, if we change it, it'd have to come to the council to change it. It's not any administrative.
Well, what is you know, my my skills aren't that keen on this, but what I'm saying is if we make a recommendation, all fees are set by resolution because we have a resolution that says all fees are set by resolution. So whatever you determine, we are going to have to vote on it at the next meeting with a resolution with a number, that I find the number, and then I type up the resolution with all this information, but what I'm asking you guys to do now is to say what the penalty is going to be, basically what we want to have in the resolution for the next meeting, because we will have to approve the resolution, um, because we can't just set fees without a resolution, so.
I'm okay with one, three, five.
Yeah.
That's me.
Okay.
Is that what it is, one, three, five?
Well, no, that, I think, was it Betsy and who that, at the comment committee? Is that what that came from?
Yeah.
You and Kevin came at three, five.
Frank was here too, and he didn't think a hundred dollars would, would do it. Yeah.
I think we proceeded with the three hundred dollar fine for the first offense, five hundred dollar fine for each subsequent offense, and, uh, they reset sixty-five. Down.
Reset. Okay, I mean, it's that good set, okay. All in favor of the fine being three hundred dollars for the first time, five hundred dollars for subsequent violations and reset each year, say aye? Okay, anyone abstaining? Okay. All right, I will get that on a resolution for the next one. All right, could I get a motion to pay the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-five for a hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-four cents? Okay, we've got Clyde and Joanne. All in favor of approving the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-five of a hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, say aye? No? Could I get the account, uh, motion for the, to pay the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-six of a hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and two cents? Okay, Mike, in a second, by Betsy.
I just asked a question of
Yeah.
The, uh, claim, I think it's to the federal government for the, uh, flood plain study. Twenty-five thousand. So then I remember we how does the twenty-five thousand fit in? Because it seemed like we that budgeted over two years, like a hundred and twenty-five thousand or more. It's our share of the and this has been completed. This is the report that we got a few months ago from um, the Army Corps of Engineer, correct?
Yeah, we had the public hearing, but I do recall, um, approving a payment to the county before, so I know that we have been um, making small payments. I think I, I kind of remember, I think it was forty thousand the last time. So I believe that this is the, the last payment, I think, of the, for the study. Um, now we have talked about budgeting money. Um, starting to budget money, because when we are moving forward with this levy project, uh, we're going to have to have some money set aside, even if we're able to get grants or or help or, or whatever. Um, if we have to go out for a mill, I don't really know yet. But, um, we are trying to start to put some money aside this budget period.
Yes, uh, we talked about it. I haven't heard much lately on it. Thanks for bringing that up, and yeah, that's, that's great, because that seemed like our share will be at least a few hundred thousand.
It's going to be about one and a half million.
Okay.
Yes.
Times five.
And, and the counties is the same.
Yeah.
And then the Army Corps pays sixty-five percent and we pay thirty-five, and that is, um, split between the city and the county, so, uh.
And just to finish on that, just that's what I was saying, so that is general fund money we put into an account for um, our flood plain. Whatever that calendar is.
I believe
I remember talking about that the other day, but that's a very good idea.
Yeah, we just touched on it the best. Which is starting to set aside and reserve for, uh, our out-of-pocket cash that we're going to have to put forward for this pot, for this project. And then once the project is complete, then we have to think about ongoing
Maintenance.
But what I'm tired, what we're talking about is what could be several hundred thousand dollars out of pocket to get the project and that's assuming we get grants or maybe loans or some combination there of the government else.
I think that'd be very helpful to, uh, convince the, the public, because it seemed to me there was a vote that needed to take place. I know I'm getting down the road a little bit, but before any of that initiates, actually it wasn't that far into the future, if I remember a little better, the, uh, engineer from Omaha, Nebraska, had a report to us that could even been the end of this calendar year. It seemed like we had to be ready to make some decisions as a community, and if we have some money that I would think help our community think of that more positive in addition to everything else that, uh, has been done and, and, and by you too, Mayor, so. Yeah, that's great, thanks.
So did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
That's part of, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so then all in favor of paying the accounts payable claims for fiscal year twenty-six of a hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and two cents, say aye? Next is a motion to Next is a motion to approve the July payroll of four hundred ten thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and eleven cents. Can I get a motion for that? Okay, Rhett, in a second. Okay, Betsy? All right, all in favor of approving the July payroll of four hundred ten thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and eleven cents, say aye? Next, we have the department head comments. Do you have any comments, Mr. Senator?
One more time to go to block down, last detail completes on the preliminary budget, so I expect that to be ready by mid-August. Um at which point, we'll put a notice in the paper, it's available for public view, all of that good stuff, but it's also an opportunity for the council at large to look at and ask questions uh for the public hearing, which is gonna be at the regular council meeting on September second. So we're getting down to the end of that process. Um the other update is the new time clock software. We did go live with that on August first, last Friday. Um the folks have been really helpful around the different departments, just giving feedback, there's always tweets, some improvements to make, let's actually use or start using the product, um so we're working through those, but overall, I'm pretty happy with how things are going right now. And once you get a couple of months under our belt with processing, I think it's gonna be a really good tool, not only for the employees, but for the managers too. Yes, sir.
Yeah, John, um you know, we kind of had a gap in there in our financial director position. It seems to me we used to vote to approve the preliminary budget and as a council, and uh I'm looking, I guess that'd be two weeks then, I mean, and everything you said fits in that, but last year it seemed like uh and some of the years before, it seemed like there was some especially the first year we had I. Bailey, I mean, gosh, it they came on board probably right around August, but but anyway, uh yeah, I I think that's something that we always did before was have a formal vote on the preliminary budget and that, and the public gets it after that, after.
I would feel much more comfortable with that. Um so August nineteenth then will be, they think that we're gonna shoot, that's our only option, right? But no, I personally would look at it, ask questions, and not seeing it for the first time with the public hearing. So yes, um thank you for mentioning that.
Is the public hearing, sorry, is that the same night of the September second, the actual budget, or third, the budget hearing, or that's
So.
Right at the start of the meeting, right? Budget hearing, yeah.
That's how it was done, I think, the last couple of years. In my opinion, that doesn't give you any time to really digest any comments the public may have, and it probably doesn't give the public a great deal of confidence that you're taking any comments they have seriously. So the the option is to have it maybe a little bit earlier, uh maybe the end of the preceding week, but we just, if that is what we want to do, we just need to make sure we properly plenty of time. It can just be on its own separate night that that's with the council.
Or if timing would allow, we could do the public hearing on August nineteenth. Then we approve the preliminary budget and on September the second.
Well, the the public hearing in the nineteenth would give the public, but really any time to look at the budget. If that's gonna be our only public hearing for that.
Well, I guess, I thought, I mean, in the, in the past people had a chance to comment even at at the September second meeting, because I think it was uh someone on the council on the night of approving it approved to raise the mill to get a fire truck.
I do remember that, Brett. But anyway, so that, yeah, that's an option, you know, we just want to get that to the public. Have those options.
Would it be okay, uh, Mr. Senator, then, on August thirteenth, that the committee sets up the rest of the timetable for budget, I mean, next week, the FUPR meets and we can say, well, here, you know, just lay it out there and we'll, we'll get it all done then and.
Yep.
But I think um you guys need, you guys, the city needs almost, you have to put it in three times in the paper or two times, three times?
Times.
Two?
Um at least it's apart, so once or two weekends. So if we noticed it, whatever that would be.
Sixteenth or something.
Sixteenth and the twenty-third or the twenty, twenty-third and the thirtieth. So that's kind of where we get into a little bit of a time correction, we have that public hearing, that's what it's notice, so we would have to do that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that following week, but that's up to you guys, if you guys wanna do it, because that that would require a special council meeting then if we didn't, in between the nineteenth and September second.
Well, I think, and and I I would yield you that, but I think you're saying if we decide right now, then we get notice in this next weekend, following weekend, and we can have a public hearing on the nineteenth, approve the preliminary budget, but still on the second. Right. So if we just commit to the date right now, then we don't have to do a special council.
Yeah, that actually, you guys sent that, right, okay? Joanne, Betsy, Clyde? Doug? Doug's holding them out, we can just, we can just set the date right now. Sure, I mean, that, I mean, it seemed.
Yes, because you're gonna publicly notice that. Two weeks to prepare. I'd know that the hearing is gonna be on the nineteenth.
And I think coming out of the committee next week, the ranger review, they would be able to freedom of the press, they put in the paper whatever they want on the budget, so the public has an idea when they show up on the nineteenth. And if they have specific concerns, they could come in before that and look at the budget and be prepared for whatever it is they want to say and stuff, but um after the committee goes through and looks at it next week, then the people certainly have uh information there to go from. Doug said write the check.
So just so I'm understanding this, we're setting the date right now?
Do we need a motion?
No, this is just a report.
That's why, that's why, that's why. Well, but we don't. Just need consensus, we don't, that's not.
Okay, okay.
Just seeing a little string is doing.
Did you have anything else?
No one.
Okay, how about you, Chief Mills?
The dispatcher at the Moncana Law Office in the academy. August weekend next week. Officer leading to go beginning of September. Be back right before Thanksgiving, that officer will come back, so this has been a challenging month with a lot of going on and that first time dispatcher failed here, you're gonna see a lot of overtime on the last time sheets. But I didn't have to, so we've made it happen, so unfortunately, you're gonna see some overtime that came through. And then stats are currency effect calls for service for the month of July was five hundred and forty-seven, and our current citations for that month thirty-one.
Did you have anything, Mr. Rubus?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh Chief Mills, you you're coming to the FUPR meeting, and if you want, you you get to be number one, and you get down, you can blow us off then. Number one.
All right, the public works report is um in your packet, the city court report is in there and finance journal vouchers are in your packet. The street committee meets on August thirteenth at four P M, the super on August thirteenth at four fifteen. I just have a couple of announcements, um just letting everybody know that the pool season is winding down next week. We'll only have afternoon swim times. The final day for the pool is Friday, August fifteenth, and on that day, everyone can swim for free from one to four forty-five. I really want to thank the pool managers, the lifeguards, the cashiers, and the public work employees who've all made this a very successful pool season. And thanks to Kevin Penya for all he's done this year to help keep the pool operating, there'll be a lot of changes next year and we'll work those out and announce the changes prior to next year's opening. So I want to thank everyone who've taken the time to compliment the city for how nice the parks are looking and how much they appreciate everything that's been done at the pool. I've heard from a lot of people in the community and it is really nice to hear. But we had an excellent group of kids working at the pool and in the parks this summer, and thanks to all the summer kids for being part of our team and making a difference in their community. And I hope everyone has had a chance to thank our local first responders. I don't think we have much time to get to the national night out, but I want to thank all these exceptional men and women who give so much to our city, so thank you all. And with that, we can move for adjournment. Um so move, I second, um on favor of adjournings, say aye? All right.